I'm going to call this meeting of your Newark City Council to order. Autumn, please call the roll.
Mr. Bob?
Here.
Mr. Cost?
Here.
Mr. Fennell?
Here.
Mr. Barker?
Here.
Ms. Hall?
Here.
Mr. Labutus?
Here.
Mr. Lang?
Present.
Mr. Marmee?
Present.
And Mr. Rath?
Here.
We have all here.
Oh, and Mr. Blake, I'm so sorry.
Here. We have almost all here down there. Sorry, Mr. Blake. We have all here present this evening. Please rise for the invocation by Mr. Blake. All in my joy.
Bow your heads. Pray for Autumn's memory. Precious Lord, we welcome you into this space to accept your guidance, to accept your precious gifts. We give thanks for all the many blessings that you've given in our individual lives and bless our individual families and bless our community as a whole. We thank you for the many positive things that have happened this year and the many blessings that you'll give us in 2020. We thank you for everything that you have and for everything that you've given to us. And we wish for many, many more things. With all this, we say, amen.
Do you join me in to pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda this evening, we have caucus. That's the time for council to discuss anything pertaining to the agenda. Do we have anything this evening?
Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to put Mr. Barker on the committees that Mr. Frazier held.
Second. Motion by Mr. Marmee, second by Mr. Lang. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. That passes. Mr. Barker is our newest council member.
Thank you.
Would you like to say hello?
Hello, everyone. Hi, Eric. Yeah, there you go. Say hello. No, thank you. Glad to be here.
Mr. Barker. You will be in committees also starting next week, so that's perfect.
Thank you, Mr. President. So used to hearing so many words from that seat.
I know. I know. Yeah, never mind. Next, we have the minutes for the November 18, 2019 meeting. Is there a motion to approve this? Motion by Mr. Labutus, second by Mr. Lang. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. That passes. Thank you. Next on appointments, we have Mayor Hall reappointing Phil Claggett to the City of Newark Board of Zoning Adjustment. His new four-year term begins January 1, 2020, and will expire December 31, 2023. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. That passes. Thank you. Also, we have Mayor Hall appointing Ann Peterson to the Newark Community Improvement Corporation, the CIC, known as the Newark Development Partners. Her three-year term begins January 1, 2020, and will expire December 31, 2022. Mayor, would you like to say anything about Ann?
Ann serves on some other committees, and certainly she's a vice president of Electric Memorial Health Systems and HR Department and has offered to set in the CIC, our partners, and we welcome her board. She certainly, as I say, with their presence in the downtown, the draft community and being our largest employer, we really think that's nice and fitting, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. That passes. Thank you. Next, we have reports of standing committees. We have one from finance, one from street, one from service, and one from personnel. Without objection, those will be received and filed. Reports of city officials, we have one this evening for Barb Jobs, our city tax administrator. It's the income tax reports ending November 15, 2019. Without objection, those will be received and filed. Next on the communications, we have one from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control. It said the results of the finding in the case of Geek Easy Arcade, which is the City of Newark. The ruling was in favor of the city objecting to the issuance of the liquor permit for Geek Easy Arcade at 17 Arcade. Without objection, that will be received and filed. Next on the agenda this evening, we have a public hearing. We're going to open the public hearing by August. Can you read the public hearing? When Autumn finds a public hearing, she's going to read it in just a second. How about those browns, huh? Really?
Oh, here it is, I'm sorry.
Now we're ready.
There's a notice of public hearing notices hereby given that the Newark City Council shall at a later date to be determined and announced hereafter take action upon ordinance number 19-23, said ordinance accepts a proposed amendment to the zoning map attached to ordinance 08-33A, which would allow the changing of zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 680 Wesley Avenue, City of Newark, Ohio, Licken County, from that of RH High Density Single Family Residence District to GEO General Office District.
Thank you, Autumn. Again, this is a public hearing. This has been the council for the first reading. It's going to the Planning Commission for their results, which I'll read here in a second. And then tonight, after we close the public hearing, we'll vote on it. We'll have a second reading and vote on it. The Planning Commission, Director Rhodes, on consideration of the information presented, I am not recommending a change in the zoning classification of 680 Wesley Avenue on the basis that this is a residential neighborhood and a change such as requested would allow for an increased traffic flow disrupting the primary use of that surrounding neighborhood. That is from Director Rhodes, head of the Planning Commission. If you all decide that we want to override that, it will take seven votes this evening. Public hearing is open. Who would like to speak for or against? Please raise your hand, and I'll have you come up. Ma'am, you just come up, and you've shared your name and address for the record.
Stephanie Kendall, 680 Wesley Avenue. Just the complaints that were given for the first meeting, I just wanted to address some of those and explain what it is that I'm trying to do. So I currently have already been operating there for almost four years as a childcare, so I'm technically already a business in that space. And what I would be doing is just increasing the amount of children that I can keep there, which really would increase no traffic or anything else in the neighborhood. So it would be more like a low-intensity type of thing. Currently, I have 13 kids there, and I'm allowed to keep six during one period of time, like my head count's allowed to be six. So changing it to a Type A, I have to have the zoning for it, but changing it to a Type A allows me to keep 12 at one time. So it wouldn't be an increase in traffic. It would really not. Right now, I have four families, so that's four vehicles that come to my home in a week's time. There's about eight to 10 hours between the vehicle coming and going. It's pretty much no different than a school bus coming and going. Trying to think of some of the things I had wrote down. You know, these families depend on me, and there's another childcare center real close that's closing. And without people like me doing childcare outside of normal daycare hours, these families have nowhere to go with their kids. You know, so these families, a lot of them don't have any other family to help them watch their kids, so they'd all be out of work and stuck in the system in a vicious cycle of trying to figure out what to do without people that can work and provide childcare in their homes outside of regular daycare hours. That's pretty much what I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to speak for or against? Now's the time. Please raise your hand. Anyone like to speak for or against? Once again, just come up and give us your name and address for the record.
Ten Talbot, 47 South Hazelwood Avenue. We do believe it will definitely increase the traffic. And another concern, which was mentioned before, was the fact that once that is open, any business could be in down there. And nobody wants that. You know, this is a nice, quiet neighborhood. What cars are going up and down through there right now aren't even stopping for the stop signs, and they're racing up and down the streets. So, you know, it's just, we don't see a good outcome on this. So, that's it.
Thank you. One more time, anyone else for or against? Last chance. Okay, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Autumn, would you read 19-23 for the second time?
Ordinance 19-23 by Mr. Rath, Mr. Marmee, and Mr. Cost, and ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 680 Wesley Avenue, City of Newark, Licken County, Ohio, from that of RH High Density Single Family Residence District to GEO General Office zoning code of the City of Newark, Ohio.
You've heard the second reading of 19-23. What does you wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Rath?
Like to make a motion to adopt 19-23.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Rath.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marmee. Is there any discussion on 19-23?
Mr. President?
Mr. Rath?
Thank you, sir. Ms. Kendall, I understand your plight, and I understand what you're trying to do, and I appreciate that. The fact that you're asking us to change this zoning from residential to general office means that it will be zone general office, and whoever owns that property will be able to put in any type of business that they want that is included in general office. That's in a residential neighborhood. It would be nice if we could had some type of zoning that allowed for a larger daycare and not any other type of business, but that doesn't exist. We can't do that. So when we make these decisions, we can't make a decision based on an individual's needs, but on the future use of that property for, even for when after you own it, or when the next owner. Because of that and because of the recommendation of the zoning board, I'm going to recommend that everybody votes no. Votes this down.
Thank you, Mr. Rath. Anyone else?
I do have--
Mr. Cost?
One question. Could I ask?
Sure. Well, go ahead.
I want to make sure I understand something. Did you say you're allowed to have six right now?
Right.
You have 13 currently?
Well, that's how many are enrolled with me that come to my home during a week, 13.
You have six at any one time.
But I can have six at any one period of time.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Now, remember, this vote, since the Planning Commission has not recommended it, will take seven votes to recommend this. That will tell. Okay. Autumn, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Bob?
No.
Mr. Cost?
No.
Mr. Fennell?
No.
Mr. Barker?
No.
Ms. Hall?
No.
Mr. Labutus?
No.
Mr. Lang?
No.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
No.
And Mr. Blake?
No.
19-23 does not pass. Nine to one. Anyone who's just here for that, you're welcome to leave now, or you can stick around for the rest of the meeting. It's up to you. I'll give you a second if you'd like. I'm not going to be upset because you don't want to stay and see us. It's okay. I may be a little. Okay, next on the agenda, we have citizens' comments. And that's time for your opinion to be heard. This is not a debate council. This is just your opportunity to speak. Does anyone for this first section of citizens' comments? Please raise your hand. Sir, then come on up. Anyone else for this first section?
Dwayne Anderson, 914B Empire Drive, Newark, Ohio. First off, the tree on the corner of King and Sharon Valley is still there, and it's still a bad obstacle for traffic wanting to turn east onto Sharon Valley. Secondly, the bushes on the corner of Sharon Valley and Granville, they're still there. And when you stop at the stop sign, you cannot see oncoming traffic coming west on Granville if you're turning either way. You have to pull almost up to Granville Street to see either way. Okay, thirdly, is the pay increase. There's no way you're going to make up for the past eight years of no increases. Each year of those past eight, the city would have spent approximately between $20,000 and $25,000 each year to equal what they're asking for now. So that $20,000 or $25,000 eight years ago compounded yearly would not have broke the City of Newark. So nothing against the people in those positions, but we're talking the positions. Law Director Sassen presented administrative argument for a salary increase to the committee, and he said, "Increased pay helps attract better job candidates to the city." Well, Mr. Mayor and all you other candidates, I think you do a pretty good job, regardless of what Law Director Sassen says. You guys are in public office, and when you ran for these positions, you knew what the pay was. Now, right after the election, you want a pay increase. I'm all for a pay increase, but not the size you guys are asking. I'm on Social Security, and the cost of living pay increase for next year is 1.6%. So I recommend a 1.6% for all the public officials. And if they didn't like the pay when they were running, every one of them, and even right now, can quit and go into the private sector and see what they make. It's no problem. Everybody's replaceable. Everybody's just a number. Safety Director Baum said the police over the past eight years got 9.5% and the firefighters 10%. That equals up to 1 and 1/4 and 1 and 1/2. That doesn't even cover the cost of living for the past eight years. So to me, that's a slap in the face to our firefighters and our police department. If the public officials got a 1.6% pay increase this year out of the $79,000 as predicted, that would leave $54,000 for road repair or however the money could be used. And over the total, it'd be $100,000, and $100,000 would pave one mile of roads. Fire and police are in negotiations right now, and having been an ex-union member myself, I'm almost positive the pay increase they'll get will only cover their insurance if it covers that. So they're either not getting a pay increase or what have you. Now on to a bigger problem. You've seen people leaving here tonight. Come the next concert for Roost on the River or River on the Roost. If something's not done about that, you guys don't have enough seats here for everybody that will be here. That is something that needs attention right away. Thank you.
Next, we have orders on the first reading, 19-34.
Ordinance 19-34 by Mr. Cost, Mr. Rath, and ordinance setting compensation and stating policy with respect to certain appointed positions of the City of Newark, Ohio, repealing all ordinances and resolutions in conflict.
19-34 will be held for two weeks till December 16 for our next meeting. Next, on the first reading, we have 19-35.
Ordinance 19-35 by Mr. Cost, Mr. Rath, and ordinance setting compensation with respect to certain elected officials of the City of Newark, Ohio, and repealing all ordinances and resolutions in conflict herein.
19-35 will be held for two weeks for our next meeting. Next, on the first reading, we have 19-36.
Ordinance 19-36 by Mr. Cost, Mr. Rath, Mr. Marmee, and ordinance vacating a 12-foot wide alley as shown on the plaque of the Joseph Kaufman Second Edition, as recorded in Plaque Book One, page 87 of the Licken County Plaque Records. Said alley is located between 196 and 212 South Fitz Street.
19-36 will be held for two weeks for our next meeting for our second reading. Next, we've got resolutions on the second reading, 19-80.
Resolution 19-80 by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Cost, Mr. Labutus, and Mr. Rath, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
You've heard your second reading of 19-80. What does you wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Marmee?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 19-80.
Motion by Mr. Marmee?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cost. Is there any discussion on 19-80? Seeing none, Autumn, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Bob?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
19-80 passes 10-0. Next, we move on to resolutions on the first reading, 19-81.
Resolution 19-81 by Mr. Rath, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmee, a resolution authorizing and directing the director of public service of the City of Newark, Ohio to advertise for bids and enter into contract for polymer use and wastewater treatment processes.
19-81 will be held for two weeks for our second reading. Next, on the first reading, 19-82.
Resolution 19-82 by Mr. Rath, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmee, a resolution authorizing the director of public service to negotiate and enter into contract with all necessary entities and without competitive bidding subject to the appropriation of funds for the purchase, installation, operation, maintenance, use, billing, and reimbursement of one or more electric vehicle charging stations within the City of Newark, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
19-82, this is on the first reading, but it is emergency. What does you wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Rath?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt 19-82.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Rath?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bob. Is there any discussion on 19-82?
Mr. President?
Mr. Rath?
This opportunity was presented to us by AEP and is a no-cost to the City of Newark. The reason for the emergency clause is to comply with their deadlines that were set by AEP.
Mr. Rath, anyone else? Autumn, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Bob?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
19-82 passes 10-0. Next, we have 19-83.
Resolution 19-83 by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Cost, Mr. Rath, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
19-83 will be--
Mr. President?
Mr. Marmee?
I make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule on Resolution 19-83.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Marmee?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lang. Mr. Marmee?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. One thing, since we just passed the previous legislation, we better put some funds in there to pay for it initially so then they can reimburse it unless we have some payouts that we have to get out right away.
Thank you, Mr. Marmee. Autumn, please call the roll to waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Bob?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Ten-day reading rule has been waived, Mr. Marmee.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I'm going to have to-- Two-day reading rule.
Two-day. Make a motion to adopt Resolution 19-83.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Marmee?
Second.
Second by Mr. Labutus. I've got to mention, Mr. Barker, usually with some of the new council members, if you have any trouble voting, I'll just shake my head to help you.
Okay.
I just-- Is there any other discussion on 19-83? Seeing none, Autumn, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Bob?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
19-83 passes 10-0. And finally tonight, we have 19-84.
Resolution 19-84 by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Cost, Mr. Rath, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
And 19-84 will be held for two weeks for our next meeting. And that concludes the legislation. Bye. Appreciate your attention. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have our second opportunity for comments from citizens. Again, it's not a debate with council, it's just your time to speak. Anyone else like to speak? Please put your hand up. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Stephen Smith, 237 Violet Court, Newark here. First of all, I'd like to welcome Mr. Barker to the council. I certainly wish you well in terms of your service to the City of Newark.
Thank you.
As a way of introducing my comments, I'd like to relate a short anecdote. In the mid-'90s, I was an engineer at the Newark Air Force Base, which wasn't still at that time the Newark Air Force Base. I had, at one point, the opportunity to travel to a facility near Detroit to review some technology that we were considering buying, that's something contracted would have been in the neighborhood of $200,000. So this was a meeting that the company had sponsored with, including myself and a number of other representatives from other companies that were thinking of buying this as well. And we had a day of presentations and meetings and so forth. And at the end, they lined us up, gave us a half gallon of maple syrup from Michigan. Well, I was federal employee, and we had very strict rules about what we could accept in terms of gratuities. And at that time, the value of a half gallon of maple syrup was above it. So I had to return the half gallon of maple syrup. Not because I don't think anyone, I certainly hope no one here would think I would be unduly influenced by the $200,000 contract by the value of a jug of maple syrup, but because I was required to avoid even the appearance of any conflict. At the last council meeting, we had a lot of comments afterwards about the Advocate editorial, "Timing of Licken County GOP Position Swapping Is Discouraged." And it seemed to me that few of the people that commented got the point of the editorial. I don't think there was any question that the motion was done properly. It was legal, and I actually think that Mr. Frazier will do a good job in that position. I wish him well in that as well. The point is that the timing had the appearance of something that was improper. Not that it was improper, but it would have the effect of suppressing voter participation when people get the impression that their votes are not important because they will be overwritten. In these very partisan times, these sort of questions can come up and raise misunderstandings. And I think the Advocate editorial was clear that this is not a partisan issue. They made the point that Democrats have done this in the past before as well. And that's just as unfortunate when that happens. The point that was discouraging was the effect that it is likely to have on voter turnout when it's already dismally low. Something like 27% of eligible voters voted in the last election. That should be a scandal. I don't think that we as a people can afford, in our representative democracy, to discourage voters. I think we should be doing everything possible to encourage voting. This perception of an undue problem was what's discouraging. Not that there was a problem. I don't know that. I have every expectation that Mr. Frazier will be a good choice for that job, that Mr. Ryan will do a good job in his position that he was hired to, and that Mr. Barker will do an excellent job on the council. I certainly wish them all well in this. But I think we really need to get those voter levels up. Our representative democracy doesn't work unless everyone participates. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Any city officials this evening? Or on the law record?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will pass.
No Clemson comment?
Yes.
Are you saving it?
Go type. I guess I better stir it to a box then. Friday night was the 71st annual lighting of the courthouse, an outstanding event attended by Mann. That's a big capital, M-Mann. It was great to see the kids there with their excitement on the faces. The weather was probably perfect, and I want to thank everyone involved. It's quite a group, courthouse lighting committee, the entertainers that night with the music truly adds to it.
But I'd like to thank the mayor and Mark Motter regarding Resolution nineteen eighty-two. I think it's very innovative and it's a, it's a real good idea with the charging stations. Thank you for your work and research with that and work with AEP and I would second what the mayor said regarding courthouse lighting. Fire Department, Police Department, Jeff Hodgkins and his crew just did a phenomenal job and went very smooth. And with that, I will pass.
Thank you, Mr. Bub. Mr. Cost?
I'd just like to welcome Spencer as well. I will pass.
Thank you, Mr. Cost. Mr. Fennell?
I'd also like to welcome Mr. Barker for being here. And to echo what Mr. Bub said as well, I've actually worked with AEP too on the same grant for the library, and it's an excellent grant. I'm really glad that you went for it. It's really going to be an excellent thing for the city. Congratulations on that. Thank you so much. With that, I'll leave.
Thank you, Mr. Fennell. Mr. Barker?
I just would like to thank everyone for welcoming me to council and I appreciate everyone's support and Newark Central Committee's support. And I wanted to thank the mayor and the rescue who attended and Ryan, I sit as president of courthouse lighting, and I have since my dad was it for the last thirty-five plus years. Ryan is on it as well with me and I appreciate his support and Fire Department, Police Department. It was a joint effort to keep this community safe for that event of sixty-five hundred plus people that came into downtown that night. So thank you again.
Thank you. Ms. Hall?
Thank you. Welcome, Spencer. It's a learning curve. I also want to thank the mayor and everyone involved. The courthouse is just absolutely gorgeous, again. I hope everyone had a nice holiday. And with that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Mr. Labutus?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to, again, welcome Mr. Barker. I know you're going to do a fantastic job in council. I'm glad you're here. And I'll echo everyone else's sentiments. We've lived in town for seventeen years at this point. I think we've been to the courthouse lighting every year about once. I actually took a family with us this year that had not seen it yet and they enjoyed it as well. So fantastic event. Congratulations and kudos to everyone that's involved with that and enjoy your courthouse. Well, it's the next month. With that, I will pass.
Thank you, Mr. Labutus. Mr. Lang?
Mr. President, thank you. I just want to address a few of the comments made tonight. Mr. Smith, I appreciate your, the story you gave and some of the background about the appearance of, of how things look. I, I think one of the issues that I've had with, with the editorial board and how, how they have piled on elected officials time after time after time, anytime there's a controversial issue or decision, they do not miss an opportunity to pile on elected officials and blame, blame the system and kind of paint this hopeless picture where you go on Facebook and you look, how many of those comments you read, read down the list are some version of, throw the bums out, they're all bums. And it creates this picture where we're all, we're all bums, none of us are any good, so why bother voting for anybody? And so I, I think there's a lot of different issues that are driving voter turnout, but I think the paper is not acknowledging its own responsibility in how it paints the picture here at the city. There are a lot of great people up here on this, on this dais with me who I think are really smart and really dedicated. There's some great leaders that are in the community and I just don't think they're getting credit for it. And I think the paper is painting this, this false picture that I think is, is helping drive that narrative, unfortunately. Mr. Anderson, thank you for reminding us about the, the two locations. I'm going to follow up with Director Rose to see what we can do. I'm not sure if those bushes are on city property or where they're located, if there's anything we can, we can do, but I, I would like to follow up with Director Rose and see, see if there's anything to address there. Regarding resolutions, nineteen thirty-four and thirty-five, the pay increases, I, I understand your concerns and somewhat in a vacuum, it's hard to see why, you know, a significant pay increase after eight years would be justified. I haven't quite made up my mind as to where, where I think those should be or if I agree with where we're at, but still open to suggestions there. Regarding the noise ordinance and the River on the Roost, I do have intentions to work with Ms. Hall to see if we can at least go through our noise ordinances to fix the deficiencies and at least land on something that's enforceable because as we've had comments from our law director and our safety director, we're currently have a noise ordinance we can't really enforce. So at minimum, I do think we need an enforceable noise ordinance. So I, I'm open to taking a look and I'll certainly work with Ms. Hall there. And last, I would like to welcome Mr. Barker. I think you're going to be a great addition to city council. He's obviously participated in a lot of events around our community and been involved for a long time. The lighting was fantastic this past Friday and I will admit to it actually being my first lighting. We traditionally go to Cleveland to spend Cleveland, spend the holidays with my family there, usually don't make it back. And this year I decided, no, it's, it's about time I get back a little early and so we were able to make it to the lighting and I think we're going to try to get back every year because it was a fantastic time. The kids, kids really loved it. So congratulations on that and look forward to working with you. With that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Lang. Mr. Marmy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I need to call a finance committee meeting. Mr. Anderson, I, I agree too that with the pay increases, I'm looking at those, I, I too kind of undecided where I, I think they should be. I reached out to the administration, trying to come up with something that is fair and equitable, but yeah, I'm, I'm not certain where they should be and if it should be where they're currently at. So I too am kind of working on that and through that. And last of all, I want to welcome Mr. Barker. We'll have your list of junior member item things to do. Okay, so the equivalent of being a freshman, just so you know.
Bring it on.
Just kidding. But we do welcome you and look forward to working with you and from everything that I've seen that you've done in the community, I think you'll be a great asset to, to the council and I appreciate you stepping forward and taking on the challenge. And with that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Marmy. Mr. Raff?
Thank you. Mr. Smith, I agree with you about voter turnout. I know as a candidate, I spend an awful lot of money mailing to people that are typically going to vote. And I would love to know that, that money is being spent wisely. So we mail to a lot of people, trying to encourage them to come out and vote, and I would love to see a higher voter turnout as well. Couldn't agree with you more. But it's not, I'm not sure what we can do about that. Mr. Barker, I suppose since everybody else did, I'll welcome you to council as well. I'm sure you'll do a great job. And all kidding aside, looking forward to working with you. You should be, should be a great asset to us. I will call a service committee meeting for December sixteenth. And with that, I will pass.
Thank you, Mr. Raff. And Mr. Blake?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to welcome Spencer. I, I've known of you from afar, from the things you've done with Young Leers, Lincoln County and other projects, but looking forward to getting to know you a little better and working with you and hopefully we can have a coffee sometime and talk about things. So I'll extend that to you. And I as well want to congratulate Mr. Motter on, I think the charging stations is a great asset that will bring to the downtown area and looking forward to seeing the hotel and others utilize that. And, you know, charging stations are becoming a part of our society now. I work at Dennison, so we have charging stations in our parking garage and being able to have that option to people is going to become a, a very positive asset. So, so thank you for bringing that forward to council and the mayor and, you know, looking forward to seeing how that plays out in that location. And look forward to spending some time with you on Friday at the Economic Development meeting over at Columbus, the annual meeting, the ED four-one-one is happening, so that's always usually a good conference and I enjoy attending that, so looking forward to that. And with that, I'll leave.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Mr. Barker, nice to have you. I too will have a list for you. Probably longer than Mr. Marmy, but it'll be good. You know, it's nice. I appreciate, I appreciate your enthusiasm, so goodbye. Our next meeting is December sixteenth at five forty-five, committee start. At seven o'clock will be full council. And with that, is there a motion, or a adjournment? Motion by Mr. Cost? Second by Mr. Barker. All in favor, signify by saying aye. About the same time. Lord Jer, thank you.